Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is the Monday, February 5th, 2024. Joint meeting between the JV Fletcher Library Board of Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee. So I'd just like to remind everybody that this that this meeting is being recorded. So all comments either spoken or provided in the chat will become part of the public record. So the first item is to. First of all, before we do roll call, I just want to just apologize to everybody for having a bail. On at the last second, last week's meeting, I. Not really sure what happened, but I did get kind of very, very ill all of a sudden and had to leave. So hopefully I can get to. This meeting tonight without repeat performance. So sorry for having to. To to leave the meeting abruptly last week. So first, first item in business is the roll call. So Buffy, you're gonna handle that?
Yes, I will. So here we go. Clermont. Derek's here Fleckner.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Secor.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Isleton.
Here.
Here.
And Karpinski is off, is absent today, right?
Correct.
Okay, Mahana.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Zagowitz.
Here.
Um, let's see, Berlinsky and Perkins are not here. Is that right? Okay, Leadburg.
Here.
Rainville.
Here.
Goodwin is not here. Monks.
Here.
And.
No one from Fine Gold Alexander is expected tonight.
Okay. Um, Gerald is sitting in for who?
Beth Perkins.
Okay, okay.
I didn't know I was, but I guess I am.
So develop. Is here.
Here.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So first item of business is the. Approval of minutes from the January 8, 2024 meeting. Christina, were you gonna share that? Or do you need me to share the screen?
I do not have it up. I'm sorry.
Do you need me to?
Yes, or Lynn, or. Maybe Ellen, do you have it?
Uh, let me just, let me just check and see if I can pull up the whole packet here.
Yeah.
I can do it if you can. I got, I got it right here, I think.
Oh, I was gonna.
I only have the hard copy on me right now, open.
Okay.
I can share a screen if we need to.
Uh, okay, yeah, if you have it, would you mind?
Let's just see here.
I can do it.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, um, here we go. Are you able to see that? Let's see.
It says your screen sharing, but we don't see the minutes. Okay, there we go. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to to review the minutes. Uh, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
We have.
Move to approve.
That's Nancy, making the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
Glenn Secor seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, so why don't we do a roll call to approve?
Yep, Clermont.
Hi.
Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Bye.
Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski is absent. Mahana.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zagowitz. So Jim, is Jim here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I didn't hear you, Jim. I'm sorry. So.
No, no, I'm sorry. That was me. Jim, are you still on?
Hmm.
He's muted.
Muted?
Yeah, it's probably muted.
Oh, yeah, Jim, Jim Zagowitz, you're muted. If you wanna vote on this.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to find it. I had to reduce anyways. Yes, I.
Okay, I hear your vote. Vote. Okay, so 11:00.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so next order of business is we also have the minutes for January 29, 2024. So can I? Uh, I get a motion to approve?
I, I have a question. About it. Is that after the motion?
Well, we, there is a discussion, but. What's your question?
Oh, um, I was confused by the notes. They seem to stop and then start again. And then on the, like, one of the page six, it says that we approved. An advance of $18,000 for the geotechnical bore, but I thought we weren't doing an advance.
So I, I sent, um, I resent the minutes this afternoon. Oh, and I'm sorry, they.
Okay.
Could get interfiled when they scanned on the copier. So yes. You know, the, the adjournment pages were out of order. So if you want to see. On my screen now is the correction, and you should find in your email, there is a corrected.
Right.
A version with the pagination in order.
Oh, okay. And it doesn't say that an advance of $18,000 was approved.
No.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Um, I'll start to put a footer and pagination in.
Okay. Need to correct that, Ellen, and do that?
We, we'll work on that together, but I think this was a, um, this, this was a scanning mishap, so I'm very sorry. And Lynn brought it to my attention midday.
Okay. All right, um, so do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
So Nancy.
We have Nancy Cook made a motion. We have a second by Jean.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Other than I'm just gonna just mention that I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain because I did have to leave midway through the meeting, so I did not. I did not finish the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Um, I'll do that on the roll call too. So, okay, so, um. We'll do a roll call then. If there's no further discussion, we'll do a roll call for the minutes for January 29.
And the only thing I'll mention that I corrected was how to spell Mary Catch Dory's name. As a guest. So, okay, here we go for the voting. Clermont.
Hi.
Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Secor.
Bye.
Teal.
Hi.
Actually, let me go back. Caroline, you weren't at either of these last two meetings. Is that right?
I thought I was at both. I remember the one about the geothermal.
I'll double check that before I do the final votes then, okay? And Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
He's absent.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Mahana.
Abstain.
That's right. Roberts.
Hi.
Zagowitz.
Hi.
So let's see, what have we got? 11:01?
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Um, so next order of business, approvals, warrants, invoices, and change orders. Uh, so the first. First invoice is for CHA Consulting for 9,520. We have a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Do you wanna do all the, just invoices all at once? Or do you wanna do it individually?
Why don't you do both?
Okay, all right. All right, so roll call for CHA. Invoice.
Okay, yep, Clermont.
Hi.
Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski is absent. Mahana.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zagowitz.
Hi.
11:00.
Great, thank you. Next is for Fine Gold Alexander Architects or schematic design. Uh, so this would be for the remaining 5% of their contract under. Uh, the schematic design portion, so the total invoice is 31,732 and 10 cents.
I don't believe that's true. I think it's for up to 95%. It is not the last 5%. It was from 80. It's the next 10%. We went from 85 to 95. They were, they are still due 5%, I believe.
Oh, um, okay. All right, I'm just reading off what it says on the agenda. I don't have.
I'm sorry.
In front of me. Okay. All right, so.
That's what it says in the invoice.
Okay.
95%.
All right, so schematic design 95%. Okay, so maybe there was just a typo on the agenda. Thank you. All right, so, but the amount is correct, right? 31,732 and 10 cents?
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, motion?
I'll move that we approve the Fine Gold Alexander invoice 2433.
Motion made by Glenn Secor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that you, Marion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all right, so roll call for the Fine Gold Alexander invoice.
Clermont.
Hi.
Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook. Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski is absent. Mahana.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hey.
Zagowitz.
Hi.
11:00.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item is the, uh, MBLCP, not the important reports that submitted. Uh, so that would be the December 2023 report. Those in the packet. We have a motion.
So moved.
Nancy Cook, move, uh, second?
Second.
Glenn Secor seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call on the Apple phone report.
Yep, Clermont. Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski is absent. Mahana.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zagowitz.
Hi.
11:00.
Great. All right, so, uh, next item is any old business? Or any new business? Does anybody have any old business or new business to discuss?
If I could just quickly bring up, and my apologies that I couldn't have my voice last, um, meeting. I had a loner computer, so. I actually failed in how to use it. But, uh, I work for the town of Acton. We had just finished building our North Acton Fire Station on Harve Street on the border of Westford and, um, Acton. Um, it's geothermal. And so there was discussion about the, um, space that is needed for the mechanical room. So we have 12 borings. And, um, it's about 400 square feet of space. Um, that includes for the, um, tanks as well. So it is about a 15, 15 to 20 foot ceiling. So the, the piping goes up pretty high, the intake, the outtake. Um, but if that gives everyone just a general idea of a, um, 12,000 square foot facility.
Okay, so that's, so that's a fair amount of space then you had to dedicate for the, uh, for the mechanicals for that.
Correct. And the other challenge too, it's not to say that it's a bad challenge. It just is what it is, is that the, um, contract runs out. Um, and so now we, um, have, having to make sure that we have mechanics. Who know how to use and maintain geothermal HVAC systems.
Okay, how, how many, how many bore holes did you say that was?
12.
12, okay. So it's probably too soon to start to have any sort of sense on. As far as savings and payback and things like that, right?
Yeah, it's, um. Yes. Yeah, too soon.
Okay, great. Thank you, Marion. Uh, Jim Zagowitz.
Uh, just, my quick question was, has anybody spoken with the historic commission after last meeting?
I think Ellen can update us on that.
Right, I, I have emailed the chair. If, if the website is correct, I might email everyone. And I have asked if they actually will be, um, meeting on February 21st. I, I asked that way because that is school vacation week, which is important for some people and not at all important for other people. But, um, I ask if they could, um. Either have their meeting at the library and tour the library with us, or have a split meeting, walk over from the museum cottage and. Um, see the space. So I, I am pursuing that. And while I have the mic on, I will just share. Um, the designers, you know, engineer felt that geothermal piping could come in. From the driveway and they did feel that the area around. The ground floor teledata room would be large enough, so there, there seemed to be positive feelings on that front. That they could, uh, handle the system.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Uh, Glenn?
So this is sort of new old business. I, I was trying to articulate a question last meeting. Couldn't quite figure out how to do it. The, the question is, is there any point? In this process where we would have made a financial commitment? For geothermal with the added implementation costs? And we're less than 100% sure that we're getting IRA money?
Yes, who's gonna? Is that you, Alicia?
Um, it's my understanding that the design team has, has the complete understanding of the IRA. But apparently it's not, the money is there. It's not something you, you have to apply for, but you don't, it's not a grant. You don't get declined. It is. Fairly, I mean, it's fairly guaranteed to get the money. I don't know the process of application, but it's not like you have to wait in line for a grant. It is funded. Is my understanding.
If I remember what Rebecca said, she said, yeah, like, just what you said, Alicia, that the money is waiting. And you just have to prove that you completed the work.
Yep.
Okay.
I think Susan, is it Susan Thomas, the new sustainability person? I thought she said that she was working on it. And has collected some tax advisors, some information about tax advisors, and so she was. Following up on it and probably would be the next person in a few weeks to get more information from, maybe?
That's correct.
So.
Yeah, so there has to be a tax advisor because it's actually a tax. Kind of a tax rebate program, but it was because of everything put into the Inflation Reduction Act that there's. A strong sense that the, you know, that the act will stay in place and those funds, because there's so many different things that. Were bipartisan that were put into the act. Some of those feelings that we had just three or four weeks ago that. We might be committing to something where the funding would fall through. We don't have that sense now. It's fully funded through 33 was my, is what Rebecca said.
Okay, so when, when you said that it's fairly guaranteed? That the money will be there. It's guaranteed, guaranteed that the money will be there. We're not exposing the town to. That additional construction costs unfunded.
That is my understanding of the, how, how the IRA.
Okay.
System is set up.
All right.
But it is, I know Ellen is going to be, once the, the first step is we're gonna do this test bore, confirm that it's gonna work. And then we'll proceed with the geothermal design if it proves that this is the correct path. I, I'm just being hesitant because. It more than likely will work, but there is a chance that the test board will show something. I don't know what that would be, but. Um, but we'll proceed with the geothermal at that time. And then, uh, but the. Issue is that the IRA will pay after we've proven the work has been done after construction. So once we go past the hurdle of the test and we get the test results, I know Ellen is already teeing up some of those conversations with the finance people in town and otherwise. Just start thinking and planning about how it will cause a. A cash flow puzzle for the project, um, more than a problem, but there will be, um. Some financing that needs to be worked out because they will not pay until the work is completed, which would be at the end of.
Ellen, I think you said you, you, Dan indicated you could handle that through the debt exclusion.
Yes, so I spoke with Christine again today, so there will be a hump. The, the geothermal will. In, involve upfront costs that aren't rebated until the very end of the project, that 1.4 million dollars. But, um, Christine says, you know, through short-term borrowing and planning, they're able to smooth that impact on the debt exclusion schedule. And, um, the geothermal bore, I met with Kristen last this morning, and so that will be on the select board's. February 13th agenda and, um, hopefully on the 14th, we can. You know, share that the board can be scheduled, hopefully maybe even on President's Day and can take place and. It takes a few weeks to have all the results in. So that is going to be a slight delay for us.
Okay, great. All right, is that it, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott?
Yes, I guess, um, if I, I, I agree. It's, it's funded. It's bipartisan. It's probably not gonna get turned around, but. It's also funded to a certain level. There's, you know, the, the Congress authorized X dollars. When you get X plus one, you don't get paid, so. Us being, you know, paid after we finish construction. Right. Uh, but that's a big, really, really certain that, uh. But I'll last, I, that, that. Will be, will be, of actually funding available.
We lost him. There you are.
Since I, as they've projected the money to be funded through 33. I, obviously they have some estimate of how quickly that money will be burned. So that's for, you know, nine years from now and will be done in construction in two years. I suppose it is. Possibility that will have, that the country will have burned through 10 years of money in two years. I, I can't really speak to that.
Well, the Congress is funding guys to get, these are towns, so probably not.
And you being optimistic that will be done in two years.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, well, 26, I think, is what we're. Um, gosh, maybe not. Let's see. Sorry, but you know, two. I've lost track of life. Sorry. Yeah. But it's a year of design and a year and a half of constructions, two and a half years. But it, it seems that if it, they believe to have funded it for 10 years, will certainly be in the first third of that. Um, but I don't know what their calculations and estimates were in terms of the burn rate.
Alicia, sometimes on their fund. Program, so they do it annually, not annual approval, but. Even if you say it's funded through 33, it may be so much for. This year, so much for next year, so.
So that's a, I can ask, um, Rebecca at, uh, Fine Gold has a better understanding of that, but I can ask her about that.
Okay.
Right, thank you. Uh, Jim?
We go again. Um, I'm just sort of a technical question. I was kind of curious what this, uh, bore is intended to tell us. Is it, is it more of a? Uh, are we just trying to get like how much water is down there to, to work with this system? Or what? I mean, I. I came away from that meeting also, and I was thinking back about these things. I'm like, hey, wait a minute, uh, the, the conductivity of. Of the earth down there is, is it really different from? Space to space? I thought we were looking for water kind of thing. Anybody know about that?
It. It is a conductivity test and they, it goes down, there will drill a casing and the, it will be our first bore of the geothermal and they will keep. Measuring, they're gonna, the test is not an instant read. It happens over a period of time over. Um, several days. I don't know exactly how long, but they're measuring how that, what the activity is in there. I don't know that, I mean, some of it, yes, it's water. Some of it is. All the things in, to measure how many from that, the results of that test will tell us exactly how many bores we need.
We don't know what this, how many of what we're. It is, again, this is just a question. I'm.
Bore is right now.
The, how many of what are we testing for? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I guess, and to add, maybe to add to that too, is, is that they. Do they start out at a certain depth and have to decide whether or not to keep going?
They, I, they intend, as I understand it, is that the bore will go to 150 feet. And they know that they are hitting granite. They are not afraid of hitting granite.
Right.
That's not, the granite does not seem to be a problem. They will bore to 150 feet and measure how. This particular conditions are here to confirm that we really need. Um, 25 borings. That's what's estimated because we do not want that to be a surprise. We want to know how many borings we will need. If, if we proceed with the geothermal system.
Okay, I'm. Still, uh. Okay. Looking for that unit, but I understand.
All right. All right, so anybody else? I don't see any other hands up. I don't see. Anything else, any other, any other issues regarding old business or new business? All right, so, um, just to review kind of our up, our upcoming schedule here over the next month or so. So our next joint meeting. Um, will be scheduled for March 4th. Um, and then as a reminder, March 23rd, uh, is the annual town meeting at Westwood Academy. There is no business on annual town meeting for this project, correct?
Right. Hey, I just jump in for a minute. Sue Thomas is, Sue Thomas, um, came in and she's, I'm just promoting her to panelist if she has a question.
Hey, Sue.
Heard you had questions about the IRA that weren't on your agenda tonight, and if I could respond to them, I would.
Sure.
Um, I don't know exactly what they were, however, so.
Well, I guess, I guess in general, the question was, um, you know, I think Glenn, Glenn's initial question was more just. Making sure what, you know, what kind of guarantees, uh, that, you know, when our project is funded, that will still be, you know, approved for that, uh, you know, for that essential re, reimbursement.
Okay, well, it functions like a tax credit. It's a law. It's, um, there's no, um. And Glenn, aren't you an, are you an accountant? I believe you are.
No.
Oh, okay. Um. Uh, the, it was bipartisan legislation. That approved the funding for the IRA. It's funded for 10 years. It's a tax credit that doesn't, you know, you don't. You don't have to apply for it like a grant. It's a tax credit like you would get. If you were an individual filing for a tax credit on your energy efficiency windows. Um, we can estimate what that will be. The town needs to hire a legal consultant. Um, to make sure that our, you know, to, to follow through the legal process and the, and make sure we get good tax advice to estimate. Um, to make, confirm the estimates that we have. I am seeking. Um, that legal expertise. It can be, as I believe you guys have heard, um. Reimbursement for that. Legal expertise can be reimbursed at half through the same tax credit mechanism. So the big piece, I think, for the budget is, and the next step. Is to identify that appropriate legal expertise. Acquire the cost for that expertise and make sure it all makes sense and comes together for the town. So. Um, I'm not sure if the question was. Reversing a, an IRS. Tax credit is a much heavier burden than just review reversing, say, an executive, presidential executive order. So, um, it would be. Difficult and time consuming, and it's already been funded for 10 years. So I think the challenge for the town is to make sure we know. That the estimation that we've done is good and solid and make sure we have the legal advice so that when we apply for it, we do it the right way and we get it.
So, um, by the time you get, we get that input, we will have already. Spent. Gone down the geothermal path, I think.
Now, well, you will have dug a test well. That's it.
Well, we're doing a test well this month.
Right.
For this month and then, but we have to approve the design. Right?
And potentially make modifications to the design of the facility too, to accommodate the infrastructure. And potentially make modifications to the design of the facility too, to accommodate the infrastructure.
Okay, but if we do that. Then we we really have kind of committed to it, right?
Yes, we have committed to it.
Right, so there are two piece, two questions that are outstanding. One is engineering-wise, does geothermal make sense? You won't know that until you have the test bore. So and then question number two is to confirm with a qualified legal advisor. That our numbers are good. And our process is right for the IRA tax credit.
And that will probably, that we actually are not wasting money by doing it, right? The the tax credit will at least compensate for different, for the higher cost.
Correct.
But then are we concerned about when that person comes on board and and makes that decision, tells us that information?
Well, I'm not because I already have a lead on who that person will be. Out of um, you know, courtesy and due diligence, we want to check with our existing council. Uh to make sure they don't have this expertise, however, I would be quite surprised if they do. Um and so um really the, um I have a a lead on a potential. Service provider, I just don't know the procurement rules around that. And that is an outstanding question, can we just contract directly with one or do we have to put out an RFP? And structure that appropriately for this unique area of expertise. So that's a question Kristen and I have on our agenda to discuss. Um with everything going on, it just, it it hasn't been the number one thing on Kristen's list, but it is like very high up on that list. Um so we have the the resources we need, we just need the time to explore the question.
Okay, Mary Ann, did you have a question regarding this?
I do, thank you. Um so I have uh three quick questions, hopefully they're quick. Um Sue, thank you so much for jumping on. Is that, can we get a tax credit for the test bores? That are coming up right now this month, and I guess it falls into my next question, when does this go into effect?
Well, the tax credit already exists if we, it it so, and it works like any other tax credit. So um in the year that the the library is built. Then you apply for the tax credit, so there is a lag, we would have to smooth the funding. I think Ellen has probably discussed this with you already, um so that, you know, we we do have to front the money. Um the way it's structured is a little vague, it's thirty to thirty-five percent of all the geothermal system. So to my mind, and I'm not a legal or tax expert, that would include the geothermal bore test.
Okay, because it would be incorporated into the system, right?
Right. Because it would become a, it it would become one of the wells.
Right.
Okay, so it is the completion of the full project, not completion of that particular task.
That is the way I read the law, but again, I am not really the qualified one to answer that question. So we need to get those experts on board.
Um and my third question is, um is there a maximum tax credit amount? Like you just mentioned thirty, thirty-five percent of all ge- um geothermal, but is there also a ceiling? That you know of, a total tax impact reimbursement?
No, there's, there is no cap, it is the, and the, the reason I'm giving you a range. Is it's thirty percent of the system, but then if we have, there are labor requirements that are an adder. And there are a couple of other requirements that are adders. Because we're a municipality, we're gonna abide by prevailing wage and we're gonna abide by the other. Um labor parts of it, so that should give us thirty-five percent. And then I believe there's a domestic content adder. And right now, we should qualify for that too, but it's gonna depend down the road on what equipment you actually put in that well. So that's why I'm giving you a range, not because I'm uncertain that the money is available, it depends on the criteria. You know, and there may be trade-offs, there may be a supply chain issue where you decide to go with a piece of equipment. That may not meet the domestic content standard, but meets all the other criteria you're trying to meet. And it's worth meeting the timetable and sacrificing a little bit of that tax credit. So those decisions are a little blurry right now, but that doesn't mean that the entire. And um decision to go with a tax credit is blurry. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Good, uh Nancy?
Thank you. Is the tax credit issued in one year or is it amateurized like so many other of the tax credits? That when you winterize, you get some this year and some next year?
No, this is a one-time, one-year chance.
And it's a maximum of thirty-five percent?
That is my understanding right now, yes. And that's where the numbers that FA have put together for you come from.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I I found something online for Mr. Zagowitz, this is of course only a problem that if you ask me more questions. But the, I Googled about the conductivity test, it says ideally the deep earth temperature will be in line with the predicted gradient. The conductivity will be greater than one point five BTU. Um divided by the hour times feet times degree Fahrenheit and the diffuse diffusivity will be greater than point eight feet. Um carrot, I don't know what that is, um two per hour. So they're obviously measuring something very specific and it's about the, apparently it's the deep earth temperature and how that translates.
Energy and, right, it was energy and um temperature, okay, very good, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Okay, uh Lynn, you have a question?
Well, just quickly, um when, when when we get the results? And um are we going to have a presentation to go over the results?
Yes. We can have the, um we'll have the architects present their um the findings, share the report and then present them. I think.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, just from a timing standpoint, I I don't think they would be ready for our March fourth meeting though, right?
They might be because Jings from Fine Gold Alexander, I believe, said there's a four-week turnaround time. But she talked to a representative from the company and they thought they might be able to do it faster. Well, once we, once they get the okay and we know when he comes out for bore, I think he'll be able to tell us how quickly, based on all the other work he's got going. And all the conditions, when he should be able to provide the report, that's what I'm hoping. But there's kind of still too many unknowns, so. You know, teeing him up and having him out there are two different things, right? He's gotta do the test first. Get it, you know, we have to get on his docket for sure.
Okay, uh Ellen?
So I'll make this really fast, um even though I know we don't think there'll be anything at town meeting. Um about this project, I will just share that on open forum on the thirteenth, the Select Boards meeting. The foundation co-chair will be sharing um the Library One Thousand Homes fundraising initiative. Which is to ask homeowners over three years to give a thousand dollars in three different payments. And um with a thousand homes doing that, we would raise a million. And you may remember that at town meeting in twenty-two, we um promised to raise one point three million. And we're hoping to raise one point five million. The friends almost have a half a million in the foundation accounts already. But there also has been quite a bit of uh discussion about whether the library vote could be rescinded. And on the budget page on the town website, um there is that question and the answer to the question. And I will just share, um you know, that I provided Kristen and Dan of the seven votes going back to twenty-twelve. That had to do with the Planning and Design Grant at Special Town Meeting, Annual Town Meeting and the ballot in twenty-two. And I did also remind them that um not only were there all of those unanimous votes at town meeting. But that there were multiple Select Board Capital Committee and Finance Committee. Um votes in order to have the questions and placed upon the warrant. So but we will potentially see some pushback both to the fundraising in light of the override discussion. And also um wondering if um although the Division of Local Services doesn't. See that there is a mechanism for it, there will be potentially questions about rescinding the vote.
Yeah, I I've, you know, I've heard similar, obviously dialogue, um but as far as we know, there is no citizens petition right now, right? To get, to get on the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
For the part that the warrant is.
Is.
So it doesn't really matter.
Okay, alright, yeah, I just wasn't sure of the dates, okay? Okay. Alright, great. Thank you, Ellen. There's no other question, so yeah, so just to wrap up, so yeah, after um annual meeting on the twenty-third. Um there are our next, our April joint meeting is scheduled for April Fool's Day. You just plan on that, um. And you know, and Ellen, if you think there's gonna be any other interim meetings that you think we need. Um cuz just try to give give us as much of a heads up as you can. Cuz um we're actually having our meeting next week, um so it's kind of three weeks in a row for us, which. Yeah, this this is way too much for our committee to handle, uh but.
I'll survey people if if we have uh bore results and you know, need to take some kind of action.
Okay, yeah, great, okay, super. Alright, if we don't have any other business. See you none, I guess let's uh motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Alright, we have motion, we have one of, we have most by Glenn and second by Nancy.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Puffy.
Here we go, Claremont.
Aye.
Dierks, I, Fleckner.
Aye.
Aye.
Secor.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski is absent, Mahana.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Zagowitz.
Aye.
So we adjourned at seven seventeen eleven zero zero.
Great. Alright, thank you, everybody, thanks for your time.
Good night.